But yeah, I mean, it it eliminates that issue if I wanted to go out and tan in the nude. I would not do it, but. Removing my.
Come on in. If you want to grab a packet, Lexi and sign in. Sorry. And then go ahead and you guys have a seat somewhere.
You guys read the uh, the American about uh, Jennifer giving us a blurb about the uh, the donation for the children's?
No, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, there's no mention of us giving a nice donation.
You know what, though? I, she didn't make it to the meeting.
Right. Oh, okay. So is that what it was?
Yeah. I sent her the packet, but that was before, of course, you approved it, you know?
The last one was Halloween trunk or treat, right? Last paper?
Yep, yep, you, yep.
So that means the.
It was done before?
It was, it would be coming up this Saturday.
Right, but again, she couldn't make it to the meeting, so I don't know if you even got out to her.
Okay, that makes sense then.
Yeah.
Were you expecting anyone else, Christina?
No.
Okay.
No.
Then I would like to call the meeting to order. Six o'clock, and if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have to roll call?
Yep.
I would need a motion to approve the agenda. Nick?
I'm motioning. A second to motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Hearing none, passes.
So me, you guys ready for some fun? Okay, so.
Why not?
I would just like to start off by apologizing to the city that um, the canvassing board had to meet on a Friday, and at this late in the game, um, by statute, the city has to certify its election within ten days of the general election date, which was November third. Many of the cities are now doing that because we had to wait for a county auditor to certify all of the election, including all the mail-in ballots that came in at a certain point by state um, statute. So, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to go race by race and certify each of those. Um, and each section, I have a couple of points I need to make. Um, it's gonna be a little unique tonight. Glad I got a, a good attorney on my side. Let me take this off. Um, so the first document I have for the board to look at is the one that has the heading, certification of canvassing board, uh, dated tonight, and then accompanying that is the document, the second documents, um, that I got from the county, which includes all the write-ins, both of which will get signed tonight. Um, the first race that we're going to certify is the mayoral race for two years. That will start, um, uh, the first Monday in January of two thousand twenty-one and go through twenty-two. Um, as you can see on my document, Max was uh, the winner with two hundred and sixty votes. And there were twelve write-ins for that uh, race as well. None of them, of course, made it to the point where they were going to be able to beat Max. So, Max, I will present to you your certification of election, noting that you are, you've gotten the majority of the vote, the votes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You won't get sworn in until January. Um, then we're gonna go to the special election. This is to um, fill the two, two-year seats that have been opened up since turnover and shifting around, both of which have been appointed currently and being filled by Nick and Sheldon. Okay? Um, by the way, the statute writes, the seats have to be filled in a special election. Um, that was held on November third as well. Sheldon filed for one of those seats and received two hundred and twenty-six ball, votes, making him one of the winners of those seats. So, I will present, oops, not ordered here. I would present Sheldon with his certificate of election, receiving the majority of your votes. Congratulations. I will not be uh, swearing in the special election councils, councilors until after this evening. Just because of the uniqueness of this, the next race. Um, the next portion of the two-year seat would be to fill the second um, seat that was only going to be filled by write-ins. So, in that race, there was fifteen write-ins for that particular candidate. Nick received three of those votes in that race. So, by the way, the votes are cast by um, the registered voters. Nick received the highest number of votes for that race. So that is your certification of that election.
I have a question, if you don't mind?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, does Nick have to accept the two-year? Can he deny it and go to the four, and accept the four-year instead?
Um, I will clarify after we get to the four-year, but yes, that's a very good question. Um.
Not saying you want the four-year or the two-year.
Um, the reason I'm gonna skip over that and come back and circle back, Jason, is because I had to get it clarified by the attorney. The next race, of course, is the general election race for two four-year seats. Um, both of which currently, one of them is empty or vacant, excuse me, and the other one is held by Jason and expires at the end of this year. So, there were no uh, candidates that actually filed for this race, so both of those seats were only held, could only be won by write-ins. In that race, there were fifty total write-ins. Four people got the same equal amount of votes. Nick was one of them. Lexi Schuler was another. Cherry Brands and Adam Ziegler, both are not present tonight. They were notified. They had plans. They couldn't make it. No problem.
Let me, let me ask a question?
Yep.
Sorry. Um, were these, were these broken down between the two seats?
No, they can't be. It's total write-ins for all. So we will be, we will be certifying um, by lot, two of these seats of those four people.
Right, but I was under the um, the assumption where each seat had to have its own specific write-in to have their name validated or voted on.
It did.
That's why I was asking.
Okay. Sorry, little confusing when you got two lines, but yeah.
Right, so, so. Please go ahead.
Yep, okay. Um, earlier this week, when I did not have all of the write-ins, I was still missing one ballot. I needed to make sure that that was all in before I could actually figure out what to do with this race tonight. And then I clarified it with the city attorney. Now, normally, um, Nick would have had all of his votes in one race. Ideally. That did not happen, okay? Um, but the way the um, election goes is you have the opportunity to take that four-year seat. You also have that opportunity to take the two-year seat. It's extremely confusing, but the voters are the ones that are awarding you that seat. And you can't deny one seat before we canvass the election. So, I'm just gonna read to you guys what Joe Langle sent the city because he knew how confusing this was tonight. Um, and then we'll move on to the by lot way of determining this um, this election race.
Okay, so that's why I was asking, between the four people that got the four votes, were they both on seat three and seat four, whatever the four-year seats are?
Yeah.
They were both on seat three and seat four?
I don't physically get to see the ballots. All I get to physically see is how many people were written in for that race. And both of those races for the four-year seats are on the ballots. So, the way the process works is you take all of those write-in ballots, all those write-in votes, because that's all you get to see. You don't get to see the entire ballot. And you subsequently tally them all up. If you looked into the canvassing board.
Yeah.
Document, this is how it's um, reported to the county.
So it's not based on each seats anymore?
It's based on the race.
So, but there's three open seats?
There's two, four-year seats, there's one two-year seat. Those on the ballot are separated.
That's what I was asking.
Okay, so when you canvas write-ins, you canvas the four-year seats and you canvas the two-year seats.
Okay, so it's, it's just an accumulation of the votes for each two-year, or for each four-years?
For e, yes.
So I got four votes for the four-year and three votes for the two-year.
That's correct. That's correct. Does that help?
What was throwing me off on that deal because of the three.
Yeah, if everybody had put, if the four people had put it in on the other.
Right, right, oh, no, I, that's, right.
You know, it's.
Because you know, you had your mayor and then you had the four slots. So each one of these are not separate votes?
They are, but they're grouped together by race. So you have the mayor race.
Right, I understand that.
Then you have the special election, which had Sheldon in an empty seat.
Yep.
That's another race.
Okay.
And then you have the two empty ones for the general or the four-year seat.
Okay.
That's a separate one. So when there, those write-ins are tallied, Jason, they are tallied separate. So if you look at this, you'll see, these are all the four-year write-ins.
I understand that. I was just trying to see if the person A was, had four votes on line two in person, B had four lines on per, on line, on line B.
Yep, if we would have had a similar situation to the two-year seat where someone had filed and someone had not, then it would be distincted that way on the canvassing board. But in this case, because both of those lines were empty,
Hmm.
you take the total of all of the votes and whoever tallies the most, those are who pick and get those votes.
So just because they were both open, it's a special circumstances.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct. I wanna make sure we're on the same page.
We are now.
Okay. Any more questions before I go to my notes from Joe?
No, no.
Alright, so I'm just gonna read to you guys your, the information that I got from him before I go to the last section. Because I know this is very confusing. Um, okay. This is Joe speaking. As you know, the city council is required to canvas the returns and declare the results of the election no later than the tenth of, after the election, which is set for tonight. Minnesota statute states, as you mentioned, if there is a tie vote, the city council shall determine the result by lot. I'm referring to the four-year general election seats right now. Seven days after the canvass is complete, um, is completed and presuming that there has not been an election contest, the municipal clerk, which is myself, shall issue a certificate of election to each successful candidate. So we're doing that to everybody tonight. Um, it can't be issued earlier and I can't swear anybody in until like a week from tonight because of this unusualness. He further states, the winner of each seat, whether as the top vote getter or by random drawing or break a tie, must be issued a certificate of election, even if the same person officially wins more than one seat and regardless of whether the person wants to take the seat. He further cites, if the same person is elected to both a special election and a general election seat, they could choose their seat by accepting either the special election seat or general election seat. They could actually accept both. In which case, the person would be in the special election seat until the first Monday in January, at which point they could automatically resign the special election seat and assume the general election seat.
Oh, yeah, we don't.
Side note, don't ever do this to me again.
Whoever's gonna be here is gotta be signing up for a while, okay?
So, furthermore, Joe states, if Nick Sights wins the drawing for the four-year seat tonight by lot, he will have to decide which seat to take. If he chooses the two-year term, that leaves a four-year seat vacant, which will have to be filled by special election or appointment. Okay? He further states, these are mandatory obligations, even if they do not really make sense in this particular situation. If you get pushback, the reasoning here is that no one except the voters, except for the voters, is authorized to speak for the voters, and they have already said so. So unfortunately, this is true if what the voter says is confusing. So I thought that that was very useful. Um.
Send that to all of us?
Sure. I had to read it five times.
So we can go back over that?
I, I'd be happy to do so.
I'm gonna frame it next to my certificate of election.
I'm just gonna.
Just to keep me confused.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. So.
Way to go, Nick.
Moving on. Moving on to the two uh, general election four-year terms. As I stated earlier, there were no actual filings for candidacy, so everything was write-ins. We have four top voters. Um, they were um, Nicholas Sights, Adam Ziegler, Cherry Brands, and Lexi Schuler. So, yep, so what I am to do tonight, although two of those folks are not here tonight, is to uh, first award a certificate of election to Lexi. Sorry, I don't have that sound. No, it's not Lexi. Congratulations, and also to Nick. And then, um, if I may, Max, we have two options. We can A, put names in a box and pull two of them out. Or we can do high card for two people. And since we only have one, two of the two people here, we could have those two people and then two other council members grab two, you know, declare ace high and whoever that might be, those would be the two people that win that race. So, which would you guys like to do? The hard one? Or the easy one?
I'm just. Twenty-five percent chance versus what?
I don't know, it's a full deck of cards, I double check, I have to take the jokers out.
Draw the name out of the hat.
Cause you guys are present. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so before I do that, I'm just gonna double, I, I did tell all of the candidates. Pardon me?
You want a motion?
No, I don't need one. Um, I did tell all the candidates except for Nick, because I had spoken to him early in the week, thinking he could just drop out of the four-year seat, but then I found out he can't. That um, if for some reason neither one of these two people present tonight, their name is pulled, you're automatically out of the race, then the other two, two people automatically win the race. At which point, they still have the opportunity, if they don't want the race, to decline the seats, which then again, the city ends up having to appoint or go back to another special election.
So it doesn't go down to the three, the two, the ones?
Nope.
So it's only on the fours?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause the voters have voted.
Mm-hmm. Understand.
Okay, so.
Now, I've just been thinking that in my head, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Clarification.
Yep. I know, and actually, that was a learning point for me.
Mm-hmm.
So, cause I, I.
The voters have spoken.
The voters have spoken.
You don't get to go second place.
Nope.
No second place.
Yeah.
First or nothing.
Yep.
Second's the.
I know, right, Lexi?
Kinda like Ricky Bobby.
Oh my gosh.
Second's the first loser.
I, I'm on record here, I'm gonna take Nick.
Yep.
Hold him in half and pull him in half to get him. Try and make these as easy as possible. Or as same as possible. There's Lexi. Adam. And Cherry.
Suspense is killing me.
Isn't it? That's okay, Lexi.
What if I like pick myself or Nick?
That's good.
Them are the two.
But, oh. But in the, but in the, in the Nick situation, he has to figure out what seat he wants. If he doesn't want the four-year seat, then he gets nothing. So.
And how many people?
By the way, this is the longest we've ever had a thing with people, I mean.
Well, say it again, Lexi.
No, I, I don't remember.
Um, four-year people to be named?
Two.
Two, all of them, all of them.
So, good. So, Mr. Mayor.
I'm a newbie.
Alright.
Pick one, don't open it yet. Jason, pick one.
Oh, now you're putting me on the spot.
Alright. Open them.
Congratulations to.
Thanks in your days.
What do you got?
Adam Ziegler.
I got Nick.
Oh, crap. Okay, hold on, I need to note this. Okay.
So that's either a confirmation and a two-year redo, or a redraw for a fifty-fifty chance?
No, we don't redraw. You don't redraw.
Well, you said the other two, if Nick turns down the four. Yep.
So, you can only draw once.
Oh.
Okay. It has to go to what was pulled.
Right.
Okay. Nick, at this point, you need to declare which seat you want.
Or two or both.
Oh, what do you, I get.
No pressure.
That's not.
You could technically, because you could, here's the deal, this two-year seats, I know, you had swimmin'. This two-year seats ended at, at the election, okay? It has to be filled. So you could fill the two-year, you could fill the four-year seat right now. I just, yeah. Anyway, what I just said. Just as confused.
Option A or option B?
If you win the drawing for the four-year seat, you will have to decide which seat to take. If you choose the two-year, that leaves the four-year seat vacant, and then it'll go open. But again. Pardon me?
Then it would just stay open.
Then it would stay open, and then anyone interested.
Oh, that's right.
In filing for a seat. Would have that opportunity to have the current council appoint.
That's right, I apologize.
But, you know, one of the problems we have is, and I'll, I can clarify this with Mr. Langle too, especially because I'm pretty sure Adam's going to decline. I've had conversation with him.
So it'd be too open.
So then both of these would be open. My, my biggest concern, and I'm gonna have to follow that up with the attorney, is that if both of these are open, then what ends up happening is you've got two four-year seats and by statute, I think you can only appoint um, if you're less than half the term left at that point in the term, and we're not, we'd be at the beginning again, which means the city has to do another election at the city's cost, again. So, I'm gonna circle back to my question to you, Nick. No pressure. Which seat would you like?
I will take the four-year.
Okay. That solves our, uh, solves one of our problems. Because I'm pretty sure Adam's going to decline it.
Cause I really, really want these seats full.
Yeah, that's kinda why I would, originally I wanted the two, but then after she was talking.
Yeah.
I think I could do the four. I will do the four.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um. Alright, so in terms of my document then, just get my head wrapped around this. Okay, so on this particular situation, um, I'm writing down that the two people that were polled were Adam and Nick for the four-year seat. It's just something I'm adding to it so that it's official. Um, Max, what I need for the council to do at this point is to motion and second to approve the results of the general election canvassing board. That's on page four of this document. Everybody signs it. And then we move forward to the resolution, uh, certifying who has what seat.
So the motion would just be certifying the election?
Yep, if you.
So you don't need to have Adam or Nick's name in there?
Not at this point. If you go to page four of the first document, Jason, above the signature lines where it says motion,
Hmm.
if you want to utilize that language, that would be perfect.
The uh, the first line where it says be resolved. Am I in the wrong one?
Right here, where it says motion by.
Set on the fourth one there.
It is.
On page eighteen.
Yep, it would be right after all the garbage I have in there about the the by lot. Um, way up, that's all the county documents.
That's probably why I didn't see it.
Keep going. One more page.
There it is.
Right there.
I motion to approve the results of the two thousand twenty general election from the Black Duck canvassing board.
Nick beat you.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Alright.
Closed. No, what are your complications?
Only three hundred and sixty-one voters, huh?
That's actually a seventy-seven percent turnout. That's through, that's how many, excuse me. We had three hundred and sixty-one registered voters the day of the election.
Hmm.
When we started. We had fifty-six new voters. We had eighty-nine mail-in ballots of the registered voters. You put the fifty-six and the three sixty-one versus how many people actually voted. It's a seventy-seven percent voter turnout.
Nice.
Um, okay. Moving on to item B. Get it out here. Um, the resolution twenty twenty thirty-four. Um, the document on page two will note that boy. So confusing. Nick. And Adam. Ziegler. And Sheldon Osland and.
Open.
That's what I'm thinking, open. What I'm gonna, I think what I'm gonna do, Max, is I'm gonna read it into the, read it into this, because I'm the one that's editing it all. Um, and then the council can do the first and second. How's that?
Sounds great.
Okay, so resolution twenty twenty thirty-four is to certify the results of the Tuesday, November third, two thousand twenty municipal election. Whereas the city of Black Duck held an election for the office of mayor, two four-year term council members and two two-year council member on two, on Tuesday, November third, two thousand twenty, during the general election with two hundred and thirty-three persons voting in person and eighty-nine absentee or mail-in. And whereas the city council has met to canvass said select, election results, and whereas the votes tabulated and counted for this election have been determined, I'm not gonna go through the details. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council that the official election results for the office of mayor for the term of two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two shall be Maxwell Goulet. And be it further resolved by the Black Duck City Council that the office of two-year council member for the term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two shall be Sheldon Osland and an open seat. To two thousand twenty-two shall be Sheldon Ossland and an open seat. And be it further resolved by the Black Duck City Council that the official election results for the offices. Of four-year council member for the term of two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four shall be Nick Sights and Adam Ziegler. Please make your motion.
A motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-four for the election results.
Sheldon, did you second it?
Second.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Do you have any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None passes.
Any further questions? It means you're out, but that doesn't mean you can't file for the two-year seat that Nick didn't take.
Or potentially the four-year, but we won't know that.
Uh, yeah, the four-year seat is kinda up in my head going, I don't know what to do at this point. I have to come, I have to talk to the attorney. Cause I don't know how that's gonna roll.
So if you can get a write-in though.
Pardon me?
She can do what I did.
She can do what Nick did and you did.
Write it.
Write a letter of interest. Intent.
For the two-year.
For the two-year seat. I would say the two-year seat because it has to be filled. Yes, the four-year has to be filled too, but it would be easier for Alexi. Given her interest to fill the two-year seat. Than the four-year seat.
Brought that up, yes, that.
And you're here and that shows a lot of interest.
Yeah.
So. Basically, yeah. Write it.
Absolutely.
You write that letter when you get home.
Just look up letter and, letter of intent and it'll tell you exactly what you're, that's what I did anyway. And it worked out for me.
It's pretty, I, it looks like a paragraph for me or so.
And then the council, the council can address it at the next, um, regular meeting, which would be December seventh. And you can call me if you have questions.
Makes you seem more interesting.
I know.
It is.
Yep, thank you.
Exactly what you need.
Yep.
That being said, I would. Why should do it then?
Okay, so Max and Jason at six-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, um, please stick around. I need signatures from everyone.
Me as well?
Yep. It will only take a second.
Oh, to verify the, the results?
Yeah, everybody needs.